To the regular portion of our meeting. Again, planning board for town west side for month of June. And I apologize, I did not introduce myself earlier. Charlie Estherbrook, I am the chair. If the other planning board members would introduce themselves, that would be great.
Kim Williams. Jerry Mitchell.
Jamie Wallace.
And we have called to order. We have established a quorum because we only need three members up here to have a quorum, and we have five. Any amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
Is there any copy of the agenda?
My done that.
Just this one, sorry.
I got it.
Check right in the morning.
Does anyone else want a copy of the agenda? I dropped you. Okay. Any amendments, Jamie?
No.
All right, having no amendments, we will move on to the applicants. Very first, we have legal, sorry, Lisa, but Lisa and Michael York for a non-conforming expansion at 24 Bruce's Byway. Is that to you guys?
Yes.
All right, if you want to come up front and show us what you've got. Is it this? Is this? Thanks. All right, come on out here. And could you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Megan Sawyer. I'm Lisa and Mike's daughter.
Oh, great.
And I'm also an architect, so I'm helping them with this project here. And I also would like to say a couple of things. So what we have here is a camp. These camps belong to my mother's grandparents from the 1950s.
Okay.
This one in particular, this is Laurel Gant, the red camp here at 22 Bruce's Byway. So a couple of years ago, her father passed away. The camp went in, went to court, they went to court over the camp with her stepmother. And so it fell into disrepair. So it's not livable right now. So what they want to do is they want to rebuild it, but they'd like to do the 30% expansion in the non-conforming.
You guys are Lisa and Mike's?
Lisa and Mike. So this is the existing plan here. It's, the acreage is 1.14 acres, so it's really small. Again, this is the other camp here.
Is there a copy?
I have also the other set of the, uh... So do you want me to just move on to the proposed plan?
Yeah, well, actually, so where are you? You're on Brigham's Cove?
Yep, Bruce's Byway, and then that, and Shoal Cove. Here's kind of a location of Shoal Cove, close to that. There's Byway, and then Brigham's Cove, real close down there.
And you've got a waterfront float that's going to stay?
Yes.
And then a shed that's going to stay?
Yes, and then there's an existing well pump house that will stay.
Yep.
They also have an existing gray water system that's shared between the two camps.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was an outhouse that was damaged and moved. But it was also, um, they went to see John Bean and they documented it, so.
Okay.
But, and they agreed that they could use part of that square footage for their expansion.
So where's the property line?
The property line's here, but the, both the camps shared the outhouse.
So you're going to use the square footage from the outhouse, which is across the line that you share with someone else?
This is their house.
To do your 30%.
This is also their camp.
Oh, so they ha, so you have both?
Yes.
Okay, so they...
We're only expanding this one.
All right, so two houses, two lots, one septic, one outhouse. Oh, good. And John has documented the outhouse. Carly, do you know anything about that?
I do not.
Okay.
So this old outhouse is getting removed?
It already was, it was damaged in a storm.
Okay.
So they went to his office and they documented it. This, the square footage and the volume and all that. And then he said we could use it when we expand this here, this camp.
So Carly...
Because it no longer exists.
Carly, do you know if John looked this up and checked to make sure it hadn't been expanded before in the file and all that good stuff?
I would assume so, I have not confirmed that with him.
It never has.
Just a procedural thing, I think next time if he's not here, he needs to write us up something to verify that he's checked and all that kind of stuff. Otherwise, we don't know. And I'm not saying you're dishonest, because this is one of our things, it's supposed to...
Yeah.
He had documented that...
The drawings were sent, well, he's probably reviewed the drawings, I'm assuming, so he would have seen that the outhouse on the drawings is what we included them as part of the existing.
And, and he could have, but right now, we don't know, is that kind of thing? Which is a problem like Suzanne? Would you agree?
If it's not, if you needed to verify that it had not been, had a 30% expansion, which is done as an affidavit in that file that the court, but...
I know, I'm just talking about a future procedural thing that probably needs to be taken care of within the office thing?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Does the other house have a bathroom?
It does not.
Okay.
So you're not replacing the outhouse?
We are not, no. So there is in the application package, there is, um, they're going to be putting in a brown, a black water holding tank. We have it, it's in the...
Sorry, we're getting ahead of you.
No, it's okay. So what they would like to have, to keep the gray water system for the sink and all, and then also have a black water tank that would be pumped just for toilet uses, black water.
Right, so are you plumbing the other house out to the black water tank?
Nope. That one right now has a composting toilet, it's not hooked up to anything.
Oh, okay.
It, it shares the gray water system that's in between the two camps right here. But again, this outhouse was used by both, now there's composting toilet that they would like to have plumbing in this one. These are seasonal tanks, they're, you don't use them during winter, they're not installed. For our proposed camp, again, we wanted to do 30% expansion. Right now, there is a deck off the front, and the new face of the camp would match the existing base of the camp. So we would essentially be removing the front deck, and then we would be coming back three feet towards the road, so that it's not any closer to the water or any closer to the side yard setbacks. It stays within the existing footprint of the camp.
So you're going up?
Yes, there will be a small upstairs if you... So this would be the first floor, and then the second floor would have just a small bedroom.
So do you have layout existing right now?
The existing?
What, like, yeah.
Yep.
Just to compare.
So this is the existing. So it's one story right now, and then there would just be a small bedroom upstairs.
You see that, I get you?
Yeah, excuse me.
And then you're adding up these amount?
It would be, and it will be less than six feet, so it's not going to count against the 30% expansion, just the storage, really. So again, a lot of the houses on this road are, you know, either single story or one and a half stories, so they wanted to, you know, not stand out. So again, it'll be keeping with the character of the road and the other houses. So this will be facing the water, this will be facing the road and the driveway, and then this will be facing their existing shed, and then this will be facing the other camp that they have.
Oh, yes, you see the big deck out front?
Yep, so they would be just taking that off and then building at the face of the camp.
None of the front of that's going to be six feet?
Sorry, I say that here?
The, it just looks like the front of it might be six feet at some point.
It's not, um...
It's close and just...
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of ledge there, so we will be building up, we have, you know, room to...
Right. Can you see this?
I have it.
And the public won't get the same, right?
Yeah.
Interesting. It's very thick paper. It's not, you just... All right. Um, you've got the farm map, farm map.
Yeah.
So you're not probably in flood at that point, height-wise?
We are not, no.
Because you're high on...
Yeah.
Are there any questions?
And then that's our lease water application for the other team.
Did you take a look at this yet?
Yep.
Is it okay?
Yeah, it's just a whole thing, so it is not...
It's got a license, too.
No, it's still okay.
So the outhouse was, I can ask a question? MJ?
Of course.
The, you figured 96 could be on the old outhouse?
Yep.
And you, that was shared with the neighbor next door?
They are the neighbor, but yes.
Very good. So you used all of that square footage and volume in your calculations?
I did, yes, because they are not going to be adding on, doing anything with their other camp. And, and they didn't want to rebuild that house, because it's not needed anymore, so...
So you're saying that was your outhouse exclusively? Yes.
Yes.
They, they own both buildings.
No, I understand. So I had a question on your volume calculations.
Sure.
Looking at this sheet here.
Yep.
The pyramid volume formula?
Yes.
You used 21 feet and then 13, and then five feet vertical, I just presume that's the height?
Yep.
You know, divided by 30 here, volume. But why did you use the 13? I was thinking it should be 21, it would give you extra volume. Isn't that original building 21 square? Or approximately, kind of like a square.
Yeah, so it's, it's, um...
So I was wondering why you used that 13 there?
Yeah. Because I wasn't including obviously the deck.
That's this one here, building. This being volume calculation. I mean, I don't think it creates any issue or anything, I just, uh... You know, for future, you know, you're kind of drawing a line in the sand where your volume is today.
Yep.
And you can go up to that 30% max, which you're not, but you want to try and be sure and count all of the volume. Because that's what you're documenting.
Yes, I was looking at the volume calculation.
It's certainly not an issue, it's something that, you know, you can look at later, too.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it and email.
Okay, that's fine.
View or download.
So are you saying that the calculations are correct?
The calculations are maybe a little under where they should be. That she has more volume than she thought possibly.
Leftover to use?
Yes.
Or that the math is wrong?
That the, not all the volume is counted in that roof path, in the pyramid.
Well, what, what I did was I did the math for the hip roofs on the side, and then I did the pyramid for the middle, so it ended up being, it wouldn't have been the full 21 feet anyway. Because you're right, the, the camp is 21 by 21.
But the, uh, but the bedroom number one you're showing, that's an actual addition beyond the pyramid, correct?
Correct, it's like a...
So the pyramid was 21 by 21?
Well, it, it is a hip, it's a hip.
Right.
So what I did was I did, um, what I did was the middle section, which would have been a triangle volume, and then I took the two ends, which would create the pyramid.
I, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But in looking at the formula for a pyramid, I mean, I think you maybe should sound yourself a little bit...
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look.
Then looking at your proposed square footage calculation, on the second floor, you used, for bedroom number two, you used 14 feet times 23 and a half. And I was wondering where that 14 came from? Would that be a little less possibly?
You're looking at the proposed volume calculation?
Proposed square footage calculation.
Oh, square footage.
And then the second floor, uh, your first floor, basement first floor, camp deck, then second floor?
Yep.
And then bed number two, you showed with the 14?
Yes.
Is that, is that going to be 14 feet wide?
Yes, it's, well, yes, I was including also the eaves.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, okay. In looking at the proposed volume calculations, proposed volume calculations, that you show basement first floor, second floor, and, uh, under first floor, you're showing 18, the kitchen living area, 18 by 15 by 7.
Yeah, so 7 is the top of the plate.
So I don't calculate 2160 by that, I'm sorry for all this detail here, but multiplying that out, 18 times 15 times 7, I get 1890.
Okay.
And then, um...
And what's here? 2160.
And then, I mean, I don't think it creates any problem, but, and then, um, that, and then going down to the bottom of that first floor, you show 1,080 cubic feet?
Yep.
And I think that's, I think you mean to put in there 945, because when you do your addition below that, you use 945. And you've got 2160 plus 945.
Oh, yes, no, you're right.
So I think, you know, you've got plus on one side and minus on the other.
Yep.
That probably, you know... But it's just important, because you're kind of, you know, again, you're drawing that line in the sand, and, you know, you want to count all that.
Absolutely.
You know, that's all.
What did you end up with for...
I didn't do a final calculation, because I wasn't sure.
So you're saying that 2160 is 18?
But she's still on that, she's, uh...
We're still on the short side.
You're, yeah, you're only proposing, uh, on the volume, 24% or something?
Yep.
So she's rolled with that, she's going to roll in the 30%. And we can cross up our approval by saying that she's provided.
The floor area was 24%, and the volume was 28%.
Yes, I think you have a couple of choices, where it's actually less to increase than what the numbers show, is we can decide to approve. And then when you go, before you, so you have to do the affidavit.
Yep.
So before we do, before you do that, you can update these numbers.
Sure.
Run them by John Bean, who enforcement, because he's the one that, you're going to have to put that affidavit through.
Correct.
Before you get your building permit.
Yep.
So that's an option.
Yep. Yep, I think that's fine.
And we'll have to put that in our motion when we decide to have a motion on the application. So let's go through the checklist real quick, can you guys help me with the yeses and nos of these things exist? On these plans, we've got a site plot plan, paper 24 by 36, obviously we have a whole day set here. Title block with owner's name. More zero map scale, legends, or current lot owner's source deed references. I didn't see a source deed in here.
I did include all the deed that you, the deed, or the work they gave me in here.
Do you know if you have these in your packet?
No.
Okay, I've got... Holding tank. A bunch of holding tanks. No, no, that's, I don't know, right? Was it in the packet you got for...
It was in the, so what happened was I only handed in one application, and then we were told to move to do some copies of the actual application. My parents went and made copies of those, so I don't...
Right. Probably there were one in the box, maybe the deeds in it? Okay, while she's looking, we'll keep going. Uh, let's see. Last mention is property lines of the air, you had that on that first plan, correct? Name to the lot and property owners, the tax assessment, that's not that. Location of bright old ways, it's going there. Location of high tide, marked river streams and rocks. Water. And obviously you're within the 75 feet, so...
Yes, we are.
Location outline of existing buildings, we have that.
Nothing is, I don't know.
Building, dwell house and the old outhouse, it's gone. Find it?
Not yet.
Huh, okay. Step backs of structures to the shore, we've got that. Areas to be cleared.
We are not clearing any trees.
Okay. Yes, you pronounced stain in your footprint, correct? Areas of cut filgrating or other earth moving, are you digging into the ground with any of this?
So there's ledge there, so we're going to have to get rid of some of the ledge for the basement.
Okay. So you, do you know about erosion control?
Yes.
To go all the way around that building, so you're not going anywhere near the water?
Yes, we did some very slim, deep fence.
Tell me where it is. Perfect. Is this your only copy, or is this like a copy we can keep?
Oh...
Keep this?
She was the only one, can you make a copy upstairs?
Yeah, you can.
I, I thought you need to make copies.
Oh, okay, um, yeah, actually...
Is the copy machine on?
It is.
I don't know. Uh, let's see, location of wetland areas, you really don't have any weapons to cover in water, so that's really... Let's see, flood hazard areas to put down, flood insurance, yes, you have that, it's not in it. Location side of existing sewer systems, water supply, is there a well?
It's in the contrast.
Oh, yeah, so, sorry.
Yeah, it's in.
Soil erosion semi-control measures there, temporary Campbell Pond, you're nowhere near that. So just some ospers. Let's see, okay. Supporting data, application we have, I'm writing on it. Location of right title or interest in property, that's the deed just copied.
Yep.
Letter of agent authorization, we have that too, which technically you didn't need because they're sitting right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's only when people come in...
Without them.
When they, yeah, when they don't own it. Location description on the map, we've got that. Photos of buildings, you guys have photos of the lane, okay?
That's good.
Complete site plotment, yes, lots of them. Origin segmentation control plan.
I just said the measures could be the...
She's got it drawn here up against the, for shore. Are you guys happy with that, and it's on there?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, usually with a big project, we have a sheet that shows the berm and all that kind of stuff, but I think that's adequate?
That's fine.
All good? Okay, we agree that that's adequate? Because you're barely digging into the ground anyway. Building plans of existing structures, you have plenty of plans. Building plans of proposed structures, you have tons of those. Copy of deed and all covenants or restrictions on existing, are there covenants or restrictions down in this area? Yeah, it's really old, it doesn't have a subdivision covenant, okay. Expansion sketches to support the worksheet calculations, we definitely have those. Type and adequacy of water supply for expansion.
So it's already a two-bedroom?
Yeah.
And that's going to be a two-bedroom?
Not expanding, I'm going to do this. Not expanding. Okay, type and adequacy of sewage disposal for expansion, again, not expanding. Byway access, same thing, Suzanne, thank you.
Can I just take a quick look at that?
Yeah. Oh, she made a bunch.
My first job here.
Thank you. One for this, which will be your copy. Oh, sorry, I'm a little bit... Appetite for recording in Saginaw registry county of deeds.
I have a copy of that.
Do you, yeah, and this is only, we don't take it. It goes with the building permit that you give to John Bean. And again, um, I'm going to just, next is expansion sketches to support the worksheet calculations, I'm just going to put, um, what do you think, Jim? Do we just say that the calculations, um, actual numbers are, are less than provided? Will, will...
Slight variations would be made in the calculations, would be approved if under 30%?
Yeah, I'm just putting on here the fact that the calculations were conservative, I think. It's on the checklist, just to say that the calculations were quite right, but they're conservative.
Just to say they need to be adjusted slightly or something.
Counts on what more conservative? Advising for affidavit, right? All right. And then, uh, at time of building permit, the affidavit. Okay, that's the end of the checklist. Do gentlemen have any other comments, questions, concerns? I don't need it.
You ready?
Anyone in the gallery have comments, questions, or concerns about the application?
Do you have a motion?
Yes, please.
I hope that the proof is presented with the caveat of the final calculations under 30%.
Yeah, they were off, but they're still under 30%?
Right.
Okay. Did you get that, Carly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and someone needs to second that?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll have a vote to approve just one, all of yours?
Okay.
All right, um, I have to tie you up a, oh, well, I have to write you up a little thing here.
And a deed and a deed and a...
Does it make a copy of your...
Yes.
Second. Good eye.
Do you want to keep that? Okay. So here's two copies back for you, you only keep one, so thank you. Let's see.
So here we go, come, 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 come all the way down. Going up is fun, yeah.
Is it technically a condition of the numbers that we change?
Yes. And I suppose you have to do that, huh?
Yes. Confirmation.
I would, I would have done them, but I just didn't know.
No, 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 it's okay, I mean, we're just...
If I was, if I calculated it correctly.
So this is, yeah, so this is gonna be approved subject to the following conditions, just having the calculations. Calculations were inaccurate, but conservative. Can't write fast enough, and still under the thirty percent. Applicant. To up, date calc. Review with a CEO. Before building permit, not taken. Okay, here. Sound all right? Take that as yes. Thank you.
Just one?
Yes, please.
Mom.
All right, Carly, it's this and this together. And a copy that Suzanne's making, yes. Okay? Oh, shoot. It goes in there, too, sorry. You can need a bigger table. Okay, she'll be down with that for you, and then you should be all set.
Thank you.
Again, make sure to come in with your calculations for your affidavit and your building permit to the enforcement, and you'll take care of it. But don't leave without your copy. All right, perfect. Well, you can, you just have to come back.
Dan, is that you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. There's a stand. Trying to make sure.
All right.
Thank you.
One of, one of the things with the packet I had was, can I see your one sheet? This is up in the packet. Want to go to the big plan sheet?
Oh, Carly's got it in there. And then Carly has one of those also.
I quit.
It's not necessarily her task, she's doing it.
She's doing a great job.
Trying, and trying. Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too.
All right, next in line, we have Main Gravel Services, please come forward. Want a chair?
So.
So I think.
Give her for this layout.
People would love to. It's to start to do with this brand-new book, right?
Yes.
And all these nice big plans. And maybe in the very beginning, you've got your application, and then you've done the write-up for all of the requirements. And make sure that they have been met. How do you guys feel about that? Board? Sure? Okay. So this is for preliminary plan approval. And provided a bunch of information, we've been here before. And I think, I hope that we're on the right track with the water across the street. And so I'd just like to look at this fresh, if that works. You guys okay with that, Karen? All right. So, let me see, where's the application sheet? We got right and title of interest, belongs to Main Gravel Services. That is in Appendix A, only if it's first.
Is that correct?
Is what, correct?
Who's the owner of this?
So that will transfer since to Westback Parking LLC, which is listed in the application now. And that is the deed you have in Appendix A, is transferring to Main Gravel to Westback Parking.
Right, so, my thing fell apart, I guess I missed it, but, um, yeah, so this deed in here is Main Gravel Services to Westback Parking LLC. And then.
But the applicant today is Main Gravel Services?
Well, it was in the previous iteration, but we changed the actual application, saying Westback Parking LLC is what it should have been.
Okay.
And so.
So the applicant is Westback Parking LLC?
Yes.
That's who that is, from his part, it's his mom.
Okay, and is Westback Parking LLC yours, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so either way, you're here.
Yeah.
Correct, okay. All right, so I think we're all set with that. Let's go back. Proposed project include expansions existing community parking lot. Three point seven acres to nine point four. Precedent number of parking spaces from about two twenty-one to eight thirty. Twenty by forty-foot proposed building for the shuttle bus waiting area shelter on the property, which is equivalent to point six percent of the lot. It's three hundred eighty-five thousand plus square feet of proposed parking area, which is twenty-seven point five percent of the lot. So we have what, this is like forty, it's up to fifty percent, am I right? In the new? Which Carly was missing to make us copies for? Copies up. Here, exactly where the percentage is, Karen? Hey, though, it used to be forty, it's less than that. No solid waste disposal on the site, established you're not having any industrials or anything. No easements, restrictions, and or covenants on the site above and beyond the fact that it's the landfill, correct?
Right, yeah, yeah, but there are not any restrictions other than it's a lot.
Right. Erosion settlement patient control notes and details included on C one oh three. Are the corners in here too? This packet?
Yeah, we included a large size.
Did you guys get a chance to plan this?
I haven't seen the new ones.
I, here's the little ones, and then I have these big ones.
This is the same as in, what was looked at before?
The only change is that we added the lighting based on the discussion last time.
The lighting is on.
Side layout, I don't see.
Side layout?
The layout is one oh two.
Is it on the side layout?
That's, that's from memory, yes.
Okay, so that's, are we ready?
All right, so here's a full-size one. Full-size one. Oh, yes, lighting. So, yeah, so are we just gonna shallow vary it?
Well, it'd have to be balanced supportive, yeah.
Same lighting?
Balanced supportive, so it's basically a big concrete block, and these things are gonna, hook over to, that can't go below the landfill cap.
Oh.
You see it on fence posts or manifolds quite often. Other utilities. It's all panels, too.
Yeah. But we're not gonna see the concrete, correct?
The concrete will be all the ground.
The underground, but it's limited by the ballast blocks, it's smart, so then we can't, yeah. I think it's a good idea.
And also.
It's gonna get dark.
They could put some cameras.
Right.
You know, for.
Yeah.
Kind of converters.
Yeah.
Same here?
For kind of converters.
People steal them.
Oh.
On cars?
Okay.
One thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I've heard about that.
Make some quick money then.
So there'll be cameras all around, or?
It's up to three.
Yeah, B A W.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Teach people on this, but, well, this is a discipline, hopefully.
Catches. All right, so I got off track because we talked about lights. So this is talking about erosion settlement patient control notes and details, one oh three, which is here. All right, so we've got. Putting total blanket, fill slope. And then sediment barrier. Over here, over there. What are you gonna use for sediment barrier?
It's not gonna be silvers, it's gonna have to be mulch.
You're doing the mulch?
Yeah, or, or compost filter socket, it doesn't have stakes, one of those two options.
And then it will just stay and, and compost out?
Well, it's like you're gonna be straight up. Yeah, it's not a problem, it's, you know, only one pack.
Gotcha. You got it, mom, huh? See, next, we've got financial capacity letter. And then it, credit union. H is the email request to the fire chief for availability of fire hydrants next to the parking expansion. And appendix D. Have. Oh, so he hasn't provided that yet?
I think the way that was handled, if I remember correctly, was we asked John during the meeting, the first meeting, we never actually got a written response back from the fire chief. We gotta check that loft though.
Right.
We can certainly try to get a written copy for final approval, thanks.
Yeah, cause usually he does the buildings, and you're not, you don't really have a building, you have like a wing to, that doesn't require a fire, because it's open, right? Yeah, it's not inhabited and whatever. So. I don't even think that there's a requirement that there's a fire hydrant goes to a parking lot. Any order, it's for commercial buildings.
There's one that they use it.
Right. There is, there is one there.
There is reference to a letter from the fire chief, do you have that?
We sent a letter to the fire chief. We haven't got a written copy.
That's what we're talking about, is we sent him an email, he didn't respond, but Mr. Duffin's saying that he said in the meeting, he was all set. So I guess what I'm saying is it's, he's not checking a building, usually it's a commercial building that he has to check and sign off on.
Well, they're not gonna have that, you know, the packing, you know, the, the standing area shelter.
Right, it's not required to have.
But isn't there a fire hydrant out on the street?
Yes.
There is, I mean, they, they use it, so they use it every year, you know, fire is done. It would be most of it is it.
Yes.
But I was expecting to see something from the fire chief in here for his approval, so we'd need to document that somehow.
So Carly, for the record, financial, not financial. The letter from the fire department, fire chief. The request for assessment from the fire chief was sent. Hold on. August ten of last year. And our chief did a verbal in a meeting, but we need it to be confirmed. And that parking lots don't require an assessment. And the personnel shelter doesn't require sprinklers. All good? Thanks, okay, thanks. So there's no public water sewer proposed on the project. Copy of the completed traffic impact study is included in appendix D. Recently submitted to DOT for review, potential traffic impacts. Have you, that, does it say, do I need to do any further? Have you gotten your DOT permit back?
Yeah.
From them, approved, or?
Yes, you submitted that before.
Yeah, I did it before.
Yes.
Okay, so.
And the, and the condition of it is the building is electrically.
Okay, so you're saying that you sent that in to John Beam earlier?
Yeah, we really see it, I see it with Dan, and I know he submitted it.
Okay, I'm just not sure. I know that we've seen.
It's like T and E, those are.
I know that we've seen the permit. The application, I'm not sure that we've seen the approval. Maybe it went in and.
It is the permit.
Right, but it's been approved?
Yes.
So maybe it's in the box. Do you think? I just wanna make sure.
No, the permit's not in the box. If it's not in the packet, the packets are the only thing in the box besides.
The same, it, it came in like a couple meetings ago. So that's why I'm thinking it's in the box.
In the file.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, because all of that is on file.
So we'll have to confirm before the final meeting that we have it's been approved.
Right.
It just makes it harder, cause we've had multiple meetings on this. So can you just put a note that we need to confirm the CEO, it exists, and it's in the documentation?
Yeah. I just need a copy tomorrow to determine here.
It still doesn't make it here sometimes, because there's a file upstairs, and it brings what, what you brought in this time, and that's what we get, so. And if he was here, he'd know probably exactly where it is. He's not, sorry. Just to catch everything.
So can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
It is, I was looking at the ordinance for, in the main used districts and so forth. And I was wondering which categories would come on this, uh, commercial parking lot. As, as in a lot of use.
An interesting question, I did the same thing myself.
We had discussed this back in the first or second year we had this project. I don't remember where.
Well, it is, anyways. I had it.
Everything is.
It's a new book, so.
Everything else is listed, but I, I looked through it quickly, I couldn't see anything.
It's something about, um, open lot storage, open lot storage. It's under H, other principal uses. Is in the building, uh, business and commercial, it was originally, I believe, permitted that way.
Under.
H two. Page twenty-seven.
Storage, a sale of junk or salvage material. Open lot storage.
You'd have to look way back, so when was it? Do you remember when it was done?
Eighty-six?
Yeah, so that would have been Ellis.
That would have been what?
Ellis B would have been the code enforcement.
Right.
And it would have come before us, and I mean, it has been storage for, a storage place for a long time before it came out, parking lot.
Well, it's permitted back then as both as storage and parking.
We still have, it's, it was all the years mostly gravel, piles and stuff.
Yeah, and if, um, cause I was thinking the same thing, and then, um, under.
Goes back, be one of Ellis.
And if you look under accessory uses, which are things that you can do with primary uses, is there's parking for allowed uses is I eight on page twenty-eight.
Okay, so you feel that covers it?
It's as close as you're gonna get, I mean, it's there.
Okay.
It's granted as a parking lot. Are you, don't think it applies?
Well, I don't know, I mean, you know, I look for, you know, where a packing, you know, commercial packing lot. And you'd think it would be in here, but I, I didn't see it anywhere in here. I did see the packing for allowed uses, but the primary use is a packing lot. I did see the packing for allowed uses, but the primary use is a packing lot, so it's a little bit.
Correct.
Actually, when it was approved by D E P, when we closed it, I think we went through this or that, and there was two ways of counting it. When we played and when we were parking, so we actually went to a certain percentage, I believe we must have come to the top that time in the closure time, nineteen ninety seven.
Yeah, we have.
And I believe that, you know, we were approved then for a parking lot, which it's more than, I think, the two hundred and something, because if you look. The actual. I think it's up here further than, oh no, I guess it's there, no, I guess it is there, no, that's right. You know, I thought, I thought it was more than that for spaces back then, I could have sworn it was more than two hundred and some spaces, but I think we used some for other things. I think it's two hundred and some spaces that's being utilized today, but I do think the storage area and like other stuff, which is steel is, is more like four hundred spaces. It's, it's really take my whole, if you really did it totally.
Well, that's, that's true, I, I feel redeemed and counted the spaces that were in use and that was two fifty and then there was a bunch of it that was fenced off and a bunch of it that wasn't being utilized. So there's a lot more than two fifty there now.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a fenced off area and then they're using outside the fenced off area and you've got the drizzle barriers covered and whatever, so.
To answer your question, I think it was approved back then, I'm almost, I know, I remember going through it by the town and whatever you had for. Or this is that at the time, so it was approved for parking.
So that would have been approved for then, right, but not serving now? Like just because, yeah, if you're not grandfather, just keep going.
I'm just trying to. I'm just trying to prove, say, say the history of it.
We're not changing the years.
But I mean, it was approved then, that's all he said, that's exactly what he said.
I think, I think if you refer that there, there is a, different sections, it does fall under any ordinance now.
Are you proposing something different?
I didn't say, I just, just clarify, like, I mean, you could do something, you know, something to be grandfathered, you could continue to do that use, right? Just because you, you have junk here somewhere, doesn't, say you have a junkyard in town, out on the road, right? It's five acres, doesn't mean you're gonna be grandfathered to put another five acre junkyard.
And if we go through the permit, you can, in the same spot and expand it? I mean, we have non-conforming stuff all over the place, but I don't think that this is non-conforming, I think that this was approved back then for storage and used it for parking. We've had the circus on there, we've had all kinds of different things. Are you saying that we don't expand it because it's grandfathered as a parking lot?
I'm just, I was just saying that, like, just because you did something in the past doesn't mean it continues to have that same use for all acres, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Well, we had things before coming for the board, it hasn't been specifically listed, we've either, you know, we revised the, you know, the uses. Are we having a lot of, I mean, before, so I mean, in this particular case, I don't see where it's specifically allowed.
This is an expansion of something that has been allowed and was approved previously. It's not a brand new.
Was it, was it approved though by the town, the fire?
It had to have been, you'd have to look back in the records. And we could certainly do that, but this is like the fourth meeting, this is the first time this has come up?
I would also defer to the code enforcement officer that's been involved.
It's not here.
From the very beginning, reviewing uses and zoning.
So, well, this is the first time I thought of it, you know, I mean, I just thought that, look. I mean, I, I expected to find it, frankly, but I didn't find it in here.
I look before plans boards all the time and, and the land use ordinance all the time, and I'm not sure I've ever seen a commercial parking lot listed as a use.
Right.
You know, and I go before patents all the time, I'm not sure that that's a common thing to include in land use permits, but.
Right.
But how, how long has this parking, you know, for the two hundred and twenty one cars been happening down there? I know there's a pile of gravel there for a long time, I don't think there's parking before that.
It's permitted for parking back in ninety six or ninety seven or something like that.
By the town?
It's permitted, that's, that's what.
It went through the, through the D E P for the closure, it had to have come through the town, but the D E P never did approve it. The, the D E P.
But that was on the cap of the, the letter, okay, we, we did include copies of the D E P approval from back then in the letter they sent out. It calls out parking, stor- storage as the approved use of the site.
That is.
Where is that?
It was on our cover letter, attachment one of our cover letter.
Is it put in here?
Yes.
It's in this, John. I may just have it in here.
So maybe you've seen some kind of.
Yeah, the, the D E P.
Show me where that is. This is, this is between the D E P though and Harry Crocker, I think, so.
Right, the D E P won't approve anything unless there's an approval on the town level too. That's why I think it won't.
You can't go.
People do them simultaneously.
Well, there was a lot happening, I'm not sure all. Eyes, but I thought I did my teeth for crossing.
So it's under section three, closure design with destruction. Proposed cover system for the parking lot, construction laid out here, it's just a following profile from top to bottom. And it's roughly three point five acres or so, totally.
Okay.
I do see it. So, I mean, and this has all been, that's why we included these permits was just to demonstrate that this has all been reviewed, approved, constructed.
Calls for sixty thousand square foot parking lot. That's an acre and a half, right?
Which, yeah. Acre and a third or around there.
So the, the pot that's being used for parking is how much right now? Seventeen acres or?
No, no, this entire park here, up here is like three and a half or so, it's right in line with the, the permanent amount, which is in.
So the existing parking area is shown on that plan, is an acre and a half?
Uh, well.
I mean, I mean, is that the acre and a half?
The total, the total area on the property used for parking and storage, I mean, this matches what was included in that application.
And per is.
So the, the whole, all the new stuff, everything new is under sixty thousand square feet?
No, this is, I believe we're still talking about the existing.
How many square feet was the existing parking lot?
Sixty thousand square feet. And so we, we, we are one, one document away from getting our revised D E P permit for the expansion show that is blocked. It's really just a transfer of title questions.
This is the title, they approved the actual design, correct?
All the technical details are worked out, we just nailed down the transition from Crocker to West Bath across the sea.
And this is like the last version?
Yeah.
Right?
And that was, that was.
After they approved it, yeah, okay.
A little bit on the order, I suspect that the follow-up approval will be dependent on state D E P permit first or?
Yeah, do you know how long that's gonna be?
The D E P, we can't tell, we have one document we'll send out tomorrow, it could be two weeks, it could be this week.
Are they at like forty five days now that they have?
There's no, do you have online ones?
Yeah, I'd say, huh?
Have we been in front of them for, for, how long have we been in front of you?
Right. Alright, so we had stopped at J, which talks about the traffic impact study.
So we're just gonna move on, I mean, from the proposed, they're reviews, the satisfied use.
Is there a motion that you'd like to make?
Jim, is there?
About the use?
I'd like to just see, go back over that, Jim, which, what, what use was the animal that you said did a foul by?
H two, open lot storage, page twenty seven, in the new one.
Under open lot storage, a sale of junk or salvage material.
And then if you turn the page. I eight, parking for allowed uses is allowed in every zone. Open lot storage is allowed in business and commercial only.
You know, literally, I don't think this covers it. I mean, I think that this is one of those things that we should consider revising. You know, and, and putting it in, so it isn't allowed use.
I agree, it's a lot that needs revising, I would say.
That's, I mean, but it's not a specific, you know, I don't, I don't think it really specifically covers the situation. But, I mean, they did have a parking area included in that approval. The proposed cover system of the parking lot, sixty thousand square feet, specifically. And then it talks about a construction laydown area, I'm not sure what that is. For two acres.
That's a sign, that's a storage.
Like a storage.
Construction laydown area.
Yeah, it's, it's storage materials for construction projects, it's kind of a difficult term.
Okay.
Yeah, gravel metal, if you're, if you're driving on the highway. Cook's Corner to West Bath, you look on the right. They're using that over there for, for a staging area for parts that are going into the B I W because there's zero.
On the left?
If you're headed north, it should be on the right.
You said from Cookstown to Bath.
On the right, okay, so it says that, fine, on the right, the right hand side, south.
Oh, on the, on the one, okay.
Route one is a big, long laydown area. And they're using that for laydown for all of the steel and everything, they use it inside of B I W because there is enough runway. So that's.
And that's what this site was used for years ago, it's been a David expansion, they use it.
Okay.
Storage stuff, and now that this is leased by B I W, it's all gone to Cookstown.
But I, I don't think our ordinance literally covers this. But we do have this letter from the D E P and open lot storage, or, you know, I guess we, we had that, but is it, is it, is it gonna be storage thereafter?
This is proposed to be parking.
Oh, parking?
I would think that it'd be able to be, they'd be come ask for more storage at that point, because that would just end the quarantine because it's been an issue, I guess.
But what we're talking about tonight is just packing?
Yes, I think so.
If B I W wants to come and ask, I think that's stuff with you guys, it's like, right?
Yeah, if it ends up changing the use out there, you have to come back and, yeah, run it through the process again.
We're just trying to do the parking.
Yeah. So.
Even though it's a huge issue.
Or do we need to make a formal motion that we're okay or not okay with?
I, I, I'm fine, it says open lot storage, is that parking?
I don't know.
This was done back in eighty seven and approved, we can only guess that it was that or something that's been removed, I don't know, but it's, it's there. And I don't think an expansion of it is a bad thing.
So if it's not specifically stated in the ordinance, does it mean that it's not approved?
If it's not listed in the uses, then it's not allowed, correct? So you notice there's certain things that aren't in there?
I'm not disagreeing with the open lot storage, I was just asking the question, if it's not specifically listed for the parking.
Yeah, and that's like.
But it's interpretive as to whether the open lot storage is parking or not.
Right.
I disagree with the open lot storage, I'm just asking.
Correct, yeah, and I think in the front of it, it says that uses that are not in the list are not allowed.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that happened seven years ago, it's not specifically listed, it's not allowed.
Gotcha.
Right.
And that just. A lot of planning to avoid those subjective questions. So, okay.
Well, because people would come in and, and what was it, it was?
It's been used before. We actually built a soccer field back there in high school, we used it for several years, other schools, they played soccer there. But it's very limited, like you can do it in towns.
Yeah, of course.
You know.
We did, we had a corner there too. So we have to move on from J to K. Project construction schedule, gentlemen? Supposedly starting in the spring of twenty twenty three and end in fall of twenty twenty three, the surface paving, that's probably adjusted a little bit.
Should say fall of twenty twenty three, then it'll be wrapped up in the spring when we get surface paving done.
Right, so just. Yeah, so, and then just states, proposed parking expansion, conform to town, West Bath, land use and development review ordinance. And I think there are more sections after this, correct? If you look at page three dash one. Article thirteen. They have nice to outline these, standards applied at site view, post parking expansion confirms, land use and development review ordinances. You look at thirteen point two, so refuse disposal, no solid waste, it just goes into the same things that I think someone said earlier. Advertising features so nine, so signs. And no proposed advertising features of signs associated with the parking expansion, this section is not applicable to the project. They're gonna be putting directional signs for parking lot. As far as the in and the out, don't turn left here and that sort of thing, correct?
Oh, yeah, you should be.
Yeah, so the traffic, the DOT required signs will be there, you know, putting up a big signs for parking here. Got it. Business and commercial signs, no proposed business and commercial signs. Lighting design standards, the distinct exterior lighting will set remain to provide adequate lighting to access into the site. Which is just like that one hole, right?
There's a couple holes along the road, yeah, and each, each entrance are close to each entrance.
Are you changing those out to LEDs or just leaving them alone?
We had to propose that at this time.
You don't have to, I'm curious.
How tall are the poles?
Twenty, twenty to twenty five feet-ish, I believe.
Got any ones or?
Both will be in the same one.
This says shall not exceed twenty five feet, right?
So why you say?
Oh, why you say, yeah, okay, page you on?
One sixteen.
Good catch, thank you. See what we have here, buddy. Okay, poles can't exceed twenty five feet, shielded to restrict the maximum apex, do you have like the lighting?
What are those?
Um, not so much that, like cut sheeted with the poles lights, cut sheeted with the lights on?
Yeah, if you remember, we're talking about, yeah, I know you're being the ones to sort of finalize the lighting design. You can provide that as a sort of less typical fixture and light for it, right?
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave that for final, to get approval? Whether B I W puts them in or you put them in?
Yep.
Correct? Yes? We're looking at it.
I don't know, you're looking at yourself.
Yeah, so you've been in here at thirteen five, the lighting design standards?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Dust fumes, vapors, gases, odors, glare, and explosive materials, no dust or any of those things. Anticipated for the proposed parking expansion project, besides maybe a noise car that might blow up. An accident. Fault hazardous substances, substance use. No storage of hazardous materials on site, landfill explosive cap, construction, parking expansion, drop off and pickup shuttle area in the shelter. Pad and structure will not impact the cap of the landfill. The only thing that will are those stanchions that the lighting conduit is gonna sit on. It won't actually hurt it, it's just gonna sit.
But it's on top of it.
Yeah, it's on top of it. Parking entrance design standards. Do we still have any questions about the entrance in and out? Gentlemen, any more?
No.
None?
No.
Well, I do.
You look like you do. Go for it.
If I understand it, you're gonna have two entrances and two exits, that's correct?
Correct.
And you've got an east entrance and exit, and you've got a west entrance and exit. So, and people exiting from the parking lot will be able to go either towards Bath, either east or west.
Correct.
But the majority, ninety two percent, take a right and head, take a right and exit.
Because they're headed towards the highway.
They're headed back to that way.
Yes.
I would guess, that's based on counts we did, it's ninety two percent exit rate.
And I apologize, Ted, because I heard the big sigh here, but I can tell you, my experience has been when I've been going by these areas where the Bath Angers people are letting out. It's really hazardous. And I think you've experienced it, I mean, if you've ever gone down by Huggs at three o'clock, then, you know, in they, uh, they seem anxious to be work, I think that's a nice way to put it. So, I, you know, that's my concern, is that we do whatever we can do to alleviate that.
Yeah, well, I mean, the fact that there are buses, there's only so many that can come in, it's not like letting out a bath where everybody gets out at the same time.
How many buses do you feel will be used?
We're thinking it'll be double, right?
Yeah.
There are three now, there'd be six.
Six days, we could do this.
So, and they're gonna not come all at the same time, you may have to load and unload, so it's just gonna be a steady flow versus everybody coming at once. And based upon the counts that we did, if you looked at the memo I sent, that right now, it's spread over forty-five minutes, the majority of accidents.
Yeah, I've heard that.
So, it's not all at once, it's, it's spread out.
So have you considered, um, at the west entrance, uh, right turn only?
Nope, no, I mean, it's, well, the analysis we did showed we were gonna have a good level of service, and the reason we have a good level of service is because the majority are right turning. The only thing we're limiting is all left turns have to be at the west early entrance, because we don't want left turns.
Let me, this question to you then, I mean, knowing, uh, how these, the exits are cursed, and I understand about the timing of the buses and so forth. I mean, what do you feel as a traffic engineer could be done to alleviate this onslaught, aggressive entry of the roadway? What could be done to alleviate that?
I honestly don't think it's gonna happen, because they're gonna be stayed in the buses, then they're gonna have to walk to their vehicles, which is spread quite out. So it's just gonna be a steady flow, and that's what the simulation model showed, it's not all gonna be at once. So that's, and it's also spread between.
So you don't feel there's any need even considering alleviating that issue?
No, because I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
Have you, I mean, uh, have you been there, like, when they get out?
Yes, yes, yes.
Like, I, I just happened to come through the other day, and the traffic was backed out all the way to the intersection.
Yeah.
From the intersection to the, to the first entrance you guys use right now. And that's just, and so with more cars, right, like, it's gonna be?
Back where?
So the first, the entrance that you guys had, uh, was right here?
Yeah.
They were backed up to there.
From, from which way?
From there.
From here to here.
Oh, in which direction?
To turn into it?
No, this, this isn't the afternoon, sorry.
Leaving it?
Leaving, so the cars were backed up all the way to here, they're stacked up.
On the road though?
Yeah, because the light was red, kind of thing?
Not sure, what are they stopped for, if they're on the road?
There's so many cars that exit the parking lot at one time, like, they, the cars were stacked up all the way to here.
Oh, they stacked up in the parking lot, they're not stacked up on the road.
No, no, they're stacked up on the road, they were stacked up on the road.
So the light had to have been red, I'm guessing.
Right, but it, it probably took like two or three cycles for it to go.
Question?
That's not what we observed when we did the counts. And that's, so that was, I mean, if they're stopped on the road, well, and yet possibly be stopped all the way to the light.
Are they even leaving from here?
How is that, why, why do you say that?
Because it's a very long distance.
I know, it's over a thousand feet though.
Yeah, it's not what we saw, but when they did the counts.
I was, I was at the same section waiting to pull out. Is that, is that normal? I don't know, that's the only time I've, I mean, have you seen it before? That's the only time I, you know, I haven't been at home that time. That's the only time you've ever seen it? Yes.
I mean, it doesn't sound like you've got three buses, and even if three buses came at once, you'd have that many vehicles, that's, yeah.
How many people on a bus?
I'm guessing fifty, right?
Fifty, yeah.
Fifty or sixty?
Yeah.
So.
So, question for you, you said that ninety-two percent are headed this way?
Correct.
So, how many people is that are headed the other way, I guess, how many, so how?
Eight percent.
Is that right, not as eight percent, is that eight people, or is that three people, or statistics are?
Percent, so in the ten hour when they're leaving and going home.
A hundred?
Um, seventy, one twelve coming out of the east lane driving, seventy-five coming out of the west lane driving.
So seventy-five coming out here.
Over the course of an hour, which is really more progressive than forty-five minutes.
Eight percent of seventy-five is like seven cars.
Going the other way?
Going left.
Two, um, sixteen and twenty-four, yeah.
Okay.
And these numbers were for the nine hundred spaces, but it's now an updated thirty, so these numbers are high.
We also have bus traffic, that's the main way out.
Right, so the buses, it's buses returning from the road.
Right, and they go up that way?
Yeah, it's primarily buses that are taking a left though.
We had a question in the back, still?
Yeah, I'm just concerned what time these buses go, because I'm also concerned with the school buses and the amount of traffic, and there's gonna be something done around the times that
Yeah, what'd you, what'd you figure was the peak time?
The peaks that we have.
Because the school gets out at two, right?
Right.
They get out at three now?
Three.
Oh, I thought they got out at two. That's right, elementary is three, the high school, I think, is two.
The P M for the parking locker, between three thirty and four thirty.
So between three thirty and four thirty was the peak, so if they're leaving the school at three, they're out of there by then.
But I do wanna say, they are the most aggressive drivers I've ever seen, and they are causing problems currently, I can only see it increasing as time goes on. I work at New Meadows, and they go that way, and often stop at the store. That's why we had to put the speed bumps in, and it's just aggressive. We've had you Saturday morning sheriff sitting across the street trying to manage some of that for us, so to say they're not aggressive, I think is underestimating what's going on there.
Hmm. That's a police situation.
Yeah, and I mean, the town, I, I got you, Suzanne, and the town could do, right, you have two selectmen, select members sitting right here that are hearing this, that, you know, policing with the sheriff's department, you have a problem on the corner, I don't know if this will make it any better or any worse, but I think that the light has been a huge change. And that made a lot, so, and then Suzanne had a question or comment I got.
Well, come on, it's, it's about the light, is there a way that we can program a longer green on the exit at, from three fifteen to three forty-five, or whatever the timeline is, that it stays green longer for, to get B I W Monday through Friday out of town? I mean, have to program it so that it's, so that everyone then wins, you're not.
Except, except the citizens of West Bath, right Suzanne? The, the people that voted you in the office don't win, right, they all sit in traffic so the rest of B I W beat it up.
It is something to look at though, because what's happening?
I was trying to alleviate, so, part of it is, of my responsibility, Jerry, is to grow business for this community. I'm not here to say anything negative about the, I'm trying to actually make it better for them by not creating a traffic jam, because we already have it without the expansion. If there's an issue, we already have it now, so I'm trying to alleviate today and tomorrow, so I think if we found a way to, um, stagger a timeline for the, so it's, if it's every forty seconds from three fifteen to three forty-five, it's seventy-five seconds. Or whatever the schedule is on the light chain, you can arrange just to make the departure, which is today's traffic and tomorrow's traffic, a little easier on everybody.
And Suzanne, I think that's a very good point, because what I want is the people trying to get around that red light. So if they come through the parking lot at sixty miles an hour, I mean, that was parking lot to avoid the red light, so maybe try to adjust that.
And there's gotta be a way to do it, there has to be a timing element that we could put into a traffic light.
No, there definitely is, the traffic lights are fully actuated, so they sense when vehicles are there. The problem is that there's a maximum green that the cycle is set to, so that maximum green could be longer, so that that wouldn't happen and more vehicles could get through.
And you set it from certain timeline, it's only for thirty minutes, or thirty-five or forty minutes on that, on the exit, on, on first shift. Outside of that, I don't think it's an issue, um, and, and we, and it would also help with the school buses. There's things that we can do, I think there's a way that we can make it work for everybody, if we look at, you know, what, what are the school buses leaving? Because they're coming from a different avenue, so if they're coming at two thirty, they get the longer green. You know, so, I mean, we're working on both sides of the coin, so the buses can get across town even before the traffic hits. There's a lot of things that we can do to, to collaborate as a group.
Is that a conversation that you would have with the D O T as a little tweak to the application for?
The town's maintaining, usually towns maintain their signals, D O T doesn't, but if D O T is maintaining that, then yes, if not, I can talk to whoever's maintaining yours.
I don't think you guys are maintaining ours.
We also didn't get our, our fire truck.
The state is maintaining it, well, the state put it in, but usually once they put a signal in, it reverts to the town for maintenance, and things like traffic signal timing. But I can, I can check to see, there are some signals that D O T does maintain that they've kept for certain reasons. So maybe they are maintaining this one, but yes, that's certainly, you know, that conversation, but it's a very easy thing to make in that screen.
But I think we also need to get a fire truck signal that allows it to.
Well, I would, I would encourage you before you suggest any changes to the D O T on that light, that the selectmen are all on board with it.
I, I think.
Because that's gonna affect the local traffic.
It does.
You know, it's gonna hold up people longer on, you know, the mess.
Yeah, it's right now, it's actually, as soon as they come, as soon as they come, it creates a detector.
The traffic is most urgent.
So my question to you is still the same, you know, we, we've heard about these aggressive drivers and so forth, you know, that, you know, as a traffic engineer, is there anything that can be done to alleviate this, so we don't have, you know, double the accidents? What, in your study, it was thirty-one accidents in the three years of your study, you know, in the area that you studied, and that's from Bath to, you know, from the town line, I guess practically to the other side of the intersection, at the four corners here. So, you know, we don't wanna increase the accident rate, but we're gonna, you know, not quadruple, but at least over three times the traffic. I found in, in here, references to, uh, two hundred and fifty parking spots today, I found two hundred and twenty-one. I mean, is it, what is the number that we have there today?
It's about two fifty, it was two, two twenty-one were the numbers that were utilized, but there were about two hundred and fifty total.
Available?
Right, but they were done, parked the day that we were there.
So what we're using today for parking is two twenty-one?
No, there's two fifty, but the day that we came to, there were only two twenty-one present.
Utilized, utilized.
So I striked, striked or marked, there's two hundred and fifty spots.
Okay, well, Patrick, your study uses two fifty, and there's other references in here to two twenty-one, so.
We utilize.
So what's the natural number proposed?
Eight thirty.
That's, that's not nine hundred, that's eight thirty?
Right, it was nine hundred when we did it, but then they, they started down. So we did a standard of nine hundred, but it's smaller.
Yeah, we had to make it smaller because of the wetlands, so. So it started out as nine hundred.
So. So if there's something that could, you know, alleviate, and they, they tend to be aggressive drivers, I'm not saying they all are, but I'm, I observed this personally, and I know others have too. And this is, this is really changing, you know, uh, the, you know, it's not just a few cars on various shifts there, this is, you know, eight hundred and thirty parking spots. And I know there's two shifts and things we spread out, and the buses are gonna arrive six or eight at a time, and so forth. But still, that's a lot of cars to be dumped onto that state road at once. So if there's something that can be done to alleviate that and make it safer for, for locals, that would be good. And I don't know what those things might be, I can only guess. I said the most extreme thing would be a traffic signal for an hour a day, or five or five minutes a day, it seems like a lot of big expense. But maybe right turn only, or maybe entrance only, or, you know, so we don't have buses crossing in front of people turning, and, I don't know. There should be something else that could be done to help alleviate this, so that it feeds people out at a more uniform rate. I mean, I've, I've come by the Haggis, had to slam on my brakes, so I wouldn't hit somebody. It's like, oh, well, that guy made it, okay, oh, jeez, another one, and then, you know, another one. And it's not just once in a while, it's like, whenever I avoid that area, because, you know, those people come and out of there.
Law enforcement's probably gonna be one of the few things that's really gonna curb.
You can't depend on that.
Yeah, go talk, go talk to the city. We need to talk to the city of Bath and City.
That's to fix the problem, here we've got a, we've got a proposal before us, and if there's anything we can do to help that issue, we should do it.
Yeah, a traffic signal, we could not go in because it's not warranted by the volumes, you need at least seventy-five left turns in an hour for eight hours of the day to warn a traffic signal, so a traffic signal could not be put in.
And that's a state rule?
And that's, that's federal, M H C D state, yeah, you need a traffic signal board under the M H C D, so that's not a possibility.
I, I think that making the light green for a long time.
I think that's gonna, I think it would have a sizable impact on that.
I mean, in, in some ways it would, but in some ways, if, if the concern is aggression and going too fast and speeding out of there.
That might be worse.
If you could be green, it may, it may.
May make it worse?
I mean, if they had no random have to be queued up for a while, that may hold it to, I don't know, but.
Same thing, topic, having a bus drive to your left out of there will hold up your traffic.
Yeah, yeah, the occasional left turn will hold up the accident rates.
Is there a need for two exits? Could you limit to one exit?
Yeah, I don't think, no, with that going, you'd want the two, the two exits.
So they get into the road as opposed to queue up in the parking lot?
I mean, there's gonna be some queuing in the parking lot already, um.
But I guess I'm, I'm saying it's potentially the traffic management item is allowing one exit as opposed to two. Because if they queue up in the parking lot, you can only have some of the cars entering, stay here.
I mean, you could, I mean, but I think, again, but when they finally get out, they may go like a bad out, I haven't looked into my mind.
But it's still only one, still on one exit as opposed to two.
Right.
And.
I think it would take them a long time to empty it, but.
But that's not the towns, you know?
But it's something, it would be, it would be to reduce the left turn, you know?
So.
So if this was buses in only, and then this was out only, kind of thing?
Entrance on one side.
That's gonna be left turns in because we can't really widen here for the left turn, we, because of the wetlands. You know, and that's impacted, so the left turn latest here, so that would be.
Right, I'm just saying, that entrance is for buses only, about right turn only, yeah.
Well, not just buses, it's right turn in.
So it would be right turn in the way?
Right turn in the way, so buses in.
And then down exit, I'm saying is don't exit that way, and they exit downhill.
Yeah, so there.
Yeah, because there's a hill on that side too that people, coming straight down.
That's, that's a good point, that's part of the problem of the Haggis, it's, it's two primary exits, and they're coming out.
It's just a suggestion, I'm just, you know, from a manager's perspective, I'm just thinking.
And they're coming out on both sides at once, it's, it does really dump a lot more cars on the road.
If we were to do that, that satisfied the folks' concerns, is this a question, or is this?
It would certainly reduce the amount of vehicles coming out at once.
We've got a question in the back too, this might just not even apply, but, you know, just like with a building, you've gotta have two means of egress for an emergency situation. If there was an emergency of some sort on that, where, you know, someone was hurt or whatever, you know, we want, we were a taxpaying citizen, we would, we're also contributing here um, to the town of West Bath, you know, we would want the same, hopefully be treated like everybody else here, with the fire rescue and the ambulance and the town, um, police station, so.
But I think from the.
Still two entrances. You'd still two entrances.
In an emergency.
I was saying if there were one entrance.
It's one exit.
In an emergency situation, we use what they need to use.
That's right.
They don't, they don't, it doesn't matter if it's an exit or an entrance, in an emergency situation, they use what they need to use.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, we're not talking about blocking both of them, we're saying in and out of the west one and in only.
Gotcha.
On the east one, so two entrances, one exit?
Yep.
So kind of block it.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
I don't think it's a bad idea, even if people.
Well, it tempers, it tempers the traffic.
Reduces the amount that's allowed to get into the roadway.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna keep up on site, but it's, it's gonna reduce your flow rate out.
Dana, just to make sure we cover all our bases, we banned the D O T for driveway entrance permits, we had approval for both of these.
I think.
Doesn't mean we can't change it, but, or does it, I guess is my question, is there any issue with D O T if we allow this?
I don't think so.
Okay.
If they send it to town, it's on the town one's first moving the traffic down exit, and.
Do you have to go back to them now?
I would go back to them, yes.
For the change, is it a shorter duration of approval?
Yeah, it's only, the entrance permit's only a few weeks.
Okay, so we're not adding ones to, okay, yeah, because that's just from the regular.
Is there a stop sign here?
Yes, stop sign.
Okay. Is it designed which way you can go on?
Does that seem like an amiable solution to the application, to applicants, as a solution to the town?
It makes it right, but, I think. Can you tell me what the volume, what the volume is out right now versus what it would be?
The volume out right now?
During peak hour, are you thinking, or?
During the peak hour right now was one hundred and thirty-five vehicles, and we're projecting three hundred and thirteen.
During the peak hour?
During the peak hour, the heaviest hour, the P M peak hour exiting. Well, that's total, that's total peak hour, that includes in, so the exiting is.
So it's five a minute.
Exiting now, two seventy-six, proposed.
So it's almost five a minute. So, it's almost five a minute.
So, is it double or more?
Two and change.
Two seventy-six, five hundred and one, I think, but two and a half tons.
So, like right now, if the traffic's backed up as it is right now to there. Like, I just can't imagine what's gonna happen once you guys expand.
It'll queue up in the parking lot.
It'll queue out, queue in the parking lot. Like it was the day I was.
It'll be.
That's right, it'll queue up in the parking lot.
It'll be like a baseball game.
Yeah, we'll just have to wait.
But any, any car that wants to get in or out, that has to wait also, right?
The ones to get in, no, the ones that wanna get in.
Wants to get, like if they wanna leave their private residence or anything like that, right there, they have to wait until all the traffic stops, unless somebody lets them out.
Or it must be changed with signal timing, so that it doesn't queue up that far back on state.
Or you can do both, you could change the signal and queue in the parking lot, and I think that would temper all of it.
Well, the signal timing is working very well right now, so I'm not sure the town wants to really change that.
Yeah, and you're gonna, you're gonna speed people up, even then, and then now, if it's slow and they've got weak cycles, then it's slowing them down exiting.
Right, so let's, let's take the two separately, so changing. Changing the timing on the light, that's something that the selectmen.
We were just talking about that, we'll talk, we have a meeting on Thursday, we can talk about that.
Right, so you'll add this to, to the agenda and discuss that, because I think that that's something that they really have to decide on. Because that has nothing to.
It'll impact the DOT permit, yeah.
We could only make an advisory.
Correct, I mean, it has nothing, it would not change the DOT permit.
No, they.
At all, because if, this does not extend all the way down there as far as your permit goes. So, if the selectmen can discuss that and decide what they wanna do.
Cause what's gonna happen is it's gonna, I mean, the light now has really helped the locals get across that intersection, I mean, there is a lot of traffic.
I agree with you.
Letting out from Haddings and from, from Bath. So, do we really wanna change the timing, I mean, I would not be an advocate for it, frankly.
We were just talking about changing, changing it in one direction to expedite the school buses. So, from three to three twenty-five, it's in favor of New Meadows to get the school buses out. And at like three thirty, three forty, it's in favor of exiting the lot.
Don't forget the school buses, you know, come on different roads, it's like the, the middle school and the high school come down.
But there are two, they're earlier, we're talking about when the elementary school gets out, by the time the high school is out, the mass exits high school, this is our, done. But we're, we're talking about the New Meadows school, they get out at three, so we're gonna, we favor the New Meadows entrance to the residents with the school buses until three thirty, and then change it at three thirty to four for BIW. So, you just change the cycling.
Right, but I agree with Jim, I think, and Diana said even the same thing, you let them go through that intersection or the state road faster, it's, may make it worse on the other end. I, I guess I would advocate for the entrances changing like we discussed, and then leaving the light alone, going through state road to see how that works.
It'll obviously change later. That's nothing to do with the applicant.
The light, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't control it, because we.
Ted's not gonna take his key and open up that door and turn the signal.
No, no, just, I mean, you can err on caution and tweak one piece and not the other, and that's enough, or if that changes the light later. So.
We have, we have additional solutions.
Control user.
Okay, all right, um, do we have further discussion about the traffic?
I, I know in the cities, they have four by six lights, eight, ten lights, all together, and they synchronize them together, so it's a similar thing.
No, it does not.
The only other thing is just that to be proper signage, you know, you know, if there is right turn only, if there is. Exit only, it could be real obvious signs.